Hi, Charlotte.
Can you hear me?
Yes. That's good. We haven't started the meeting yet, so I just wanted to unmute and put the video on.
Okay.
Fantastic. Are we expecting Michael?
Yes, although he is currently in Qatar, the country, so it is very late there. So he was gonna do his best to join. But if we'd rather we go ahead and get started, I think I was planning to lead the presentation tonight anyway. So whenever you all are ready.
Okay.
Pick me up with a bear flag, yeah.
I'd like to bring the mayor and town council work session from May 27, 2025 to order. We are at the Worcester County Government Center Boardroom, Room 1102, and it is 5:01. If we take a look at the agenda for this evening. The first item is the Critical Areas Ordinance presentation. And Mr. Pollack, would you like to present them, please?
Sure, as you've heard us mention for some time now, we do have an operation now, an ordinance designed to implement the Snow Hill version of the state Critical Areas Ordinance. And on occasion, the state requires an update to that ordinance, and it's time for us to go through that exercise. We've actually been working very hard with our counterparts at the state to come up with the ordinance that brings into effect all of the changes through state legislation that must have deflected in our local ordinance now. And so what we've arranged for today is a presentation of the newly drafted ordinance that we have designed to basically repeal and replace our existing ordinance with the new required language from state Maryland. And so I'm very anxious to turn it over to our friends on the other side of the big pond, as they say. If you'll introduce yourselves and tell us just again to kind of recap what we're here for, we'll leave it all up to you.
Excellent, thank you very much. So my name is Charlotte Sheeran. I am the program manager here at the commission. With me today are my colleagues Annie Sakarik and Mike Grassman is also online, as I said, from Qatar. And so just to give a quick recap of why we're here. Last year, the legislative, in the legislative session of 2024, the General Assembly passed some updates to the critical area law. One of those updates was related to the required timeframe for comprehensive reviews of critical area programs. That used to be required every six years. The legislation extended it to every 10 years. It did also add in some repercussions if that, if that 10-year mark is not met. There are, there's the ability to request extensions to that 10-year mark. But then if, after I believe two years of extensions, the program still has not been updated, then the commission is able to update the program for the jurisdiction. And we do not want to have to do that. We really want to try and work with all of our local jurisdictions to get their programs up to date. And so as part of that effort, we were able to hire Mike Grassman as a part-time contractual employee. And his sole duties over the last year has been to work with all of our small municipalities and towns to help them get their programs updated. And as part of that effort, we do have what we refer to as kind of a model ordinance that our staff created, and it basically just lays out the bare minimum requirements to meet the state law and regulations. And it's kind of written in an ordinance language so that a municipality could easily just adopt that model if they chose to do that. And so that model was updated last year in preparation for Mike's efforts to start working with all of the towns. And so what Mike did was he took that model and he took the existing Snow Hill ordinance and kind of did a compare-contrast and noted where updates were needed. And I think that what you have before you in your packets is kind of a version of that update. It does include the previous ordinance of Snow Hill because I believe in conversations with the town, we decided to do a full repeal and replace of the ordinance. So technically, for your approval, you would have to approve all of the strike-through of the entire existing ordinance. And then it would be replaced with the update that Mike kind of created using our model template and the existing town ordinance. So the first kind of 47 pages of that document is just the strike-through of the existing ordinance. So that is kind of irrelevant to our discussion tonight. And then everything after that, like I said, is really based on our model ordinance. So it kind of follows like the bare minimum requirements based on state law and regulations. There are a couple of provisions within the, within the model that are what we consider to be kind of opt-in provisions. And those are laid out either in our law or in our regulations. And so the first place where that comes up is on page, I believe it should be page 59 of the document that you all have. And that should be under the Resource Conservation Area, and it's discussing accessory dwelling units. So our law allows for, we have, well, first, we have a density requirement in the Resource Conservation Area of the RCA, which is our most restrictive designation. The town of Snow Hill, I can show you if I'm able to share. Thank you. So this is a map of the town of Snow Hill. The town boundary is in black here, and then the colored area is the critical area within the town. And so there are three designations in the critical area. The most restrictive, as I said, is the Resource Conservation Area, that is anywhere you see green. The least restrictive designation is Intensely Developed Area, that is anywhere you see red. And then the kind of in-between designation is the Limited Development Area, and that is shown in yellow here. So as you can see, most of Snow Hill is intensely developed area. So that's the least restrictive designation that makes sense for a municipality that has, you know, more intense development within its boundary. But you do have some areas of Resource Conservation Area within the town limits. And so in the RCA, we have a density restriction of one dwelling unit per 20 acres. However, our law does allow for an exception to that for what's called an accessory dwelling unit. And there are certain requirements in the location of the accessory dwelling unit and the size of the accessory dwelling unit that, as long as those requirements are met, it will not count against the density. This is an opt-in provision, not every jurisdiction chooses to allow accessory dwelling units in the RCA. But that would be one place that I think the town might want to discuss, you know. One, looking at the RCA you have within your town boundary. Is there a need for accessory dwelling units in those areas? I don't know the answer to that question, but I'm sure you all are very familiar with this property and the uses on it, as well as, you know, the other areas of RCA. So that would kind of be a place for potential discussion among the council. The next kind of opt-in section of the ordinance is on page 63. That is under the Non-Water Dependent Structures on Piers language. And so this.
Now, can you use the question as you go? Because I'm looking on, you said on 59, and on 59, I don't mind it starts. It leads in from here into 50, what she was talking about, is that the.
Well, she then goes in 50.
That's just. All right, thank you.
Okay, good, no problem. So now I've gone to page 63, is that, are we on the, with the non-water dependent structures on piers? Good? Okay, great, thank you. So this is also an opt-in section, so the town does not have to adopt these provisions. But these regulations, we wrote with the Maryland Department of Environment because they actually permit these structures. But it's to allow a structure on a pier that is not water-dependent. So by its inherent nature, it doesn't have to be over the water or on the pier. And there are actually kind of two pathways written into this regulation. The town can adopt one and not the other, or the other and not the first one, or you can adopt both of those pathways, or you cannot adopt any of them. So the first pathway is related to commercial uses. And so that is what we have tended to see. That provision used for is like restaurants on the water who may want to put a structure out on their pier so that patrons can sit outside on the pier and eat as part of like the restaurant use. In that case, the property has to be designated IDA, so it has to be Intensely Developed Area. So again, we're looking at the red areas here on the map. And it also has to be a commercial use, so that the property has to be zoned for a commercial use. So again, I don't know how many properties in the town that would apply to, but I'm sure that you all have a much stronger grasp on that question. And, you know, again, another kind of conversational point, I think, would be related to, you know, whether the town wants to have structures out on piers in terms of, you know, your waterfront and what you see there. Some jurisdictions. Some jurisdictions were definitely in favor of that and some were not. So again, you know, just kind of thinking through if you adopt those provisions, what that will look like for the town. The second pathway for non-water dependent structures on peers is related to renewable energy systems. And so these are limited to residential uses. So a property owner who may want to install solar panels, they could place those on their pier along the sides. We've seen that done. Sometimes there are geothermal systems that property owners want to install. And, you know, for one reason or another, placing that underneath the pier, kind of hanging down under the pier. That has been a common request we've seen. And then also small wind turbines. Again, these are just going to be for residential power generating use. So there are height restrictions on them. I believe they're limited to eight feet high. But those could also theoretically be placed out on a pier. And again, that's strictly for residential use. Again, you know, like I said, this would be a conversation for the town to kind of have related to whether you want those structures to be allowed on peers, you know, and what that would look like along the waterfront for the town. And so I think those are kind of the two main places that I wanted to kind of call the council's attention to. Because again, I think those represent really the two places where provisions do not need to be adopted. They're opt-in, these are opt-in sections of the ordinance. And I think there's, you know, potentially conversation for the town to have about what they kind of want for the town and the development there along the water.
And I'll just jump in while Charlotte's mentioned these, the draft before you and working with your staff opted in into those. So there's the opt-in for the ADUs. There's, they opted into the peers and then opted in for the small wind energy. So you see on that page 63, if you read it, there's language there that says this would be allowed if, you know, A, B, C, D, you know. Just so you know, the way it's drafted right now, you're opted in.
You're opted into it. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Charlotte.
And I can definitely answer any questions about anything either related to the ordinance or critical area or your, the map I projected. If you have any questions, feel free to, to ask them.
Are these two items that you just talked about, are they the main differences? Or what are the other differences that are, you know, should stick out that we should know about?
Yeah. So if you, I think, to me, those are the two that there's, you know, an ability for the town to either adopt them or not adopt them. All of the other changes are just bringing the ordinance up to date with the state law and state regulations. So last year, as part of that bill that the Legislative Assembly passed, there were also changes to the law made related to climate resiliency and equity considerations. And so there were some changes, I believe, to the ordinance to reflect those updates to the law. And so as an example, there's a process written into the critical area law and regulations called growth allocation. It's basically an upzoning process for the critical area designation. So you could change the RCA designation to LDA or IDA. You could change the LDA designation to IDA. And as part of that growth allocation process, there are certain standards and factors laid out in the regulations. The, the standards are kind of, they must be met in order for a growth allocation to be approved. And a lot of what those kind of revolve around are location to existing more intense development. So like, the reason those were written into the regulations was to prevent kind of pockets of high intense development kind of scattered throughout. And it was an effort to kind of keep intense development adjacent to other intense development. So there's a location standard related to a new IDA has to be adjacent to an existing IDA or located within, entirely within an LDA. So like you're not going to get, you know, a pocket of IDA out in the middle of an RCA area somewhere. And so one of the new standards that was part of the legislative update was related to locating growth allocation in vulnerable areas, vulnerable to climate change factors. So the way that is written is that a jurisdiction should avoid placing a growth allocation in a vulnerable area unless they have provisions related to how the development in that area will be more resilient to the projections for sea level rise, erosion, land loss, that kind of thing that might be happening in that area. Then we also have growth allocation factors, which are, they're not required to be met like standards are, but they are factors that like the Commission will consider when they're reviewing and approving a growth allocation request. So they're kind of, they're not must-meet kind of standards like the, like the standards are, but they are more considerations that the Commission might think about or ask questions about when they're reviewing a growth allocation proposal. And one of the factors that was added last year was related to the proposed development's impact on underserved or overburdened communities. And we have a, the state has developed as part of another bill that went through the legislature, I believe in 2022. Maryland Department of Environment developed what's called the environmental justice screening tool. And it takes into consideration many different factors to determine whether a community is considered to be overburdened or underserved. Some of those factors, so there's several listed under the environmental pollution that, that community may be exposed to. And that's related to how close they might be located to a potential polluting source, like a wastewater treatment plant, discharge pipe, or, you know, potential air pollution from industrial uses nearby. So kind of, there's several different factors that are considered to determine like the level of pollution near that community. And then there are also several factors considered related to how susceptible that community might be to that pollution. So the age demographics of the community, they also look at rates of asthma in the community based on like the hospital data, rates of myocardial infarction, also related to the hospital data. So that kind of gives like a specific score for that community then, based on that information. And then the mapper also takes into consideration the underserved factors for the community. And that is related to, there's a socio-demographic data associated with that. So race, income, I think age is also part of that factor. But then it also looks at, there's some kind of like, a little bit of like random things factored in there, like related to internet access, I think, as part of the, whether it's underserved related to internet access. I think that's considered there. And then also I think English as a second language may be another, like just looking at kind of some of the demographic information for that community. And so then all of that is calculated for the community itself. And when I say community, the mapper is based on census tract. So it's all, all of that information is calculated for the census tract and then kind of, what's the word I'm looking for? Assessed across the state. So it's kind of like every community is compared to all the other communities across the state. So it creates kind of a percentile for that specific community in comparison to all the other communities across the state. And if your community falls within the 75th or higher percentile, then you are considered overburdened and underserved under that legislation. That was a very long-winded description. But anyway, that is how we were using that tool basically to answer the questions for that growth allocation factor that was added with the legislative update last year.
Okay, thank you. Questions from council? Councilperson Lane, you have any questions?
No, I went about this process, the exact opposite to what you said. You know what I did? I started it and I looked at the old piece first and I said, gosh, what is this? But thank you so much for helping, helping me out. And we'll, we'll continue to track through it.
You're very welcome. Thank you for participating and paying attention. That's engaged in asking questions. That's always appreciated.
Councilperson Monkin.
I'm good.
You're good? Councilperson Fletcher.
I'm bobble.
You're bobble?
Because I went to the county once, so I'm like, I still don't know a lot about this, but I, yeah. This is a lot to read. I had not read. I will be on this whole ordinance. I started, but I, it is a lot.
Yeah.
And what Charlotte tried to highlight for you all is, one, the things that are the options, because the rest of it is state law and you're required to have it.
You have to have it.
That's not a question.
So the highlighted is.
Yeah, page 58, page 63. And then she described that the flow of allocation standards were updated this last round. So that was something that we updated, both we need to, so that would be different.
Council, do you need a repeat of those two things that we can opt out of? Are we good on that?
I have.
You have it written down? Okay. All right.
And I see Michael there. And he's the one that did the first cut and compared our ordinance to state ordinance, set us a fully redline draft for your staff to review. And I know it took a tremendous amount of time. He went through several provisions back and forth. Rick, Aaron and I looked at all those when it was tremendously helpful. And he's in another country right now on here with us. So just thank you from our end because they were very, very helpful and very easy to work with.
Great, great. Thank you so much. Aaron, do you have anything else to add? Or are we, are we good from your end also?
No, the only thing I would say is that we did also verify what the actual process of going through, who has to what, to do a relocation or reallocation of any of the RCA, IDA, or LVA. So it'd be the planning commission was recommended to the, to the council. And council would prove it and then they would review it, sign off on it or not.
Is the gentleman in the country, what's, what's this? Michael?
Yes.
Michael, you're, you're going to be leaving soon, is that correct?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Said you're going to be leaving soon, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. My, my contract is for one year. So I started in mid-July. I worked for the Commission as a planner for five years. And then my, my wife works for the US government, so we relocated overseas. And I guess I hadn't annoyed the Commission quite enough after I left. So they were very gracious in allowing me the opportunity to help them with this effort. And I've been working with, I, I think about like 15 or so towns throughout the state's critical area, going through this, this same process with them to get their ordinances as close to being ready for the local adoption process as possible before my contract ends. And that's in about six weeks. Yeah. And Maureen and Rick and everybody have been great to work with. So I just, I want to take a moment to, if you have questions about the critical area and the process, I know it's a lot if, if you're not familiar with some of these regulations. And when you look at a document like that and you see all this stuff crossed out and all these comments and everything, it's a lot, but the critical area staff are always there to work with. And Maureen and Rick and everybody have, they have worked and they've, they've done a lot of work on this document with me. And they've, any, any questions and stuff that on the town's behalf, they, they've definitely addressed it. And they've been very, very thorough in this process. So I, I rest assured, any questions that you have about it or concerns, they, they've probably addressed them and have been very much looking out for the towns we have to make sure that this is going to be, this ordinance update is going to be the best thing for the town and address some of the town's current issues with critical area and upcoming things that may be on the horizon when you're looking at trying to balance conservation and development.
May I ask a question?
Certainly.
In going back through this now, I think there's a lot of ignominious round table. This is not the easy thing to look at. So how, how are we now going to follow through? Who, who's the go-to person on staff without, you know, if you have questions to get through this for, get prepared in preparation for the next meeting or for a meeting?
Well, I think Aaron would be the person. I mean, I know Rick.
You can send it to Aaron and I if you have any questions when you go through it.
Right.
If you send it to me, I'll definitely forward it to both of us. Because we've been working on it, the three of us together, so. Because it's a, as you've noticed, it's a very big document, a lot of fine little things in it. So one person isn't going to catch everything, so it's best to.
The team approach there? Okay, good, definitely.
I, I think that would be wise for council also on this one. I don't know, but that gets in something else. Team approach on it. You'll get through it a little bit, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, community, at this point? Well, Charlotte, we'd like to, the town of Snow Hill would like to thank you and your team and everyone on staff that has helped draw this document. Maureen, thank you.
Sure, absolutely. I would pass the thanks on to Mike because he really did, like Maureen said, the brunt of the work here, so. And we were very lucky to have him on board to do this for the last year. So we're very grateful. And thank you to the town for being great partners in this process.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Good night.
Good night.
Take care. Thanks all.
All right. Next item on the agenda. We have Backstreet Bikes and thank you for your patience. I know you came to another meeting and it went on for a little while. And, but we're glad to have you back again. We have Dale Hendricks and the Hollies here with us to present some information and a proposal for a new location for Backstreet Bikes. So Dale, if you want to come up and Stephanie, are you coming up with it? Okay.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to present you.
Great, welcome.
This evening. For Stephanie is our president, the honor treasurer for Backstreet Bikes. So what I thought we would do would be just to start off a little half round and everybody have to tend to speed on our organization and what we do, so. Of course, next. Eric, okay. So Stephanie, you want to? Eric, okay, so Stephanie, you want to? Down through the history?
Sure, so um, uh, Backstreet Bikes was started here in Snow Hill uh by uh a lady Kathy Friedman, who's um. It was her idea and she approached Chris and I. She knew that we were uh into bicycling and um. And knowledgeable about bicycle maintenance and uh she, uh, we were moving back to Snow Hill after being away for many years. Um, and um, she approached us about starting a five oh one three C. Uh, she saw a need in town for uh local people to be able to uh receive and obtain. Bicycle parts and tubes and tires for kids and adults um that isn't available on Snow Hill. And uh, if you don't have a car, um, it would be very difficult to find parts, so um, so she started out of her home. To uh address that issue and uh, I think it mostly started, we, we hadn't moved back, so I can't really say, but I think it mostly started. With children and uh, but uh, and she helped adults too, but I think it mostly started with kids. So uh, so we have expanded, so we got our five oh one three C uh in March of twenty twenty-one. And um, we have uh enlarged the, our uh base to help um. More than just children and residents here in Snow Hill. We've branched out into uh other parts of Worcester County. We've helped out people in Pocano. Uh, we're helping people in West Ocean City through Diakonia. Uh, we have partnered with um Bob and um the Lower Shore Workforce Alliance, which is um in Salisbury. Through their Wheels to Work program and we help them um with their clients that need bikes to get to work. So uh, we have uh branched out quite a bit since that very beginning and, but our main focus, I would say, is still Snow Hill. This is where we started and this is where we like to be, so um, so that um. Then we, so we have also joined with the Worcester County Pedestrian and Bicycle Coalition uh who, they advocate for bike safety. Uh, throughout the state of Maryland, uh, and uh. Uh, well, the Worcester County does, does Worcester County, but it's part of the big, uh, part of the state of Maryland also. They go uh. Patty Stevens goes to meetings uh in Annapolis to advocate for bike safety and more bike trails uh in neighborhoods. Um, I believe the town also belongs to that group also. Uh, which is part of the uh Snow Hill Bike Way study uh that you guys did. Uh, we participated in that. And uh, the Greenways and Trails Master Plan, uh, I've already addressed the Lower Shore Workforce Alliance. Um, and uh, since we started, we have given out over uh a hundred bicycles. And um, just in this last month, uh, Chris is our chief bike mechanic.
Okay.
Um, and um, just in the last month, we've given out over eight bicycles. So uh, so uh, that's a lot for a little town, so. So uh, you know, we really, we feel like we're small, but we're mighty. You know, we're helping, we feel like we're helping a lot of people out in the community, so.
All right. I'm still on what I need to. There we go. Okay, so where we are today, um, right now, we're currently working out of Stephanie and Chris's garage. Uh, pasture, so it's a very uh, uh. Small operation and we want to expand it. Uh, Stephanie mentioned that Chris is the, her chief master bike mechanic. We also have uh. Uh, Matt Myers, who also helps refurbish the bicycles. Currently, we have a ward of eight members, a couple consultants and advisors. Uh, we have a donated storage facility up in Whiten. Uh, we're looking for another storage facility so we can take in more bicycles and store more bicycles. Um, we partner with Diakonia uh to provide basic bicycle maintenance training. So this is to their clients to get them change flat tires, uh, you know, replace a chain, whatever, just minor maintenance on bicycles. Um, we also have set up a online uh donation called Give Butter, uh, where we take in uh small donations. Uh, have a brand-new website and also Facebook page and uh we also partner with Snow Hill Elementary School for bicycle city training as well. So what really brings us here tonight is. Um. We're looking for a location um in Snow Hill that we can set up shop where we can work on the bicycles, we can store bicycles. Uh, we can um, uh, take in donations, some people can drop off bicycles to the facility. Uh, and also do some training there as well. Initially, we, we thought about the possibly the train station, the old train station. Um, it, it looked like an ideal location because it's right there on the proposed rail to trail bicycle path. Uh, we thought would be a nice location. However, you know, we are open to any other suggestions or opportunities that might present themselves to us. Um, another suggestion brought up by Councilman Lee was the, possibly the uh. Uh, snack shop in Bird Park, including that into a facility. So really, that's what we're looking for right now is a permanent location uh that we can set up shop, so that means from Chris's garage. Um, we also want to expand the program to meet overwhelming demand for bikes. We have a lot of people asking for bikes. We work um. Uh, with Diakonia, Goodwill, Habitat for Humanity, a Halo Shelter up in Salisbury. Um, Hope and a lot of the faith-based uh organizations. Um, as Stephanie mentioned, uh, we also partner with my company, my organization, uh, the Lower Shore Workforce Alliance. We do workforce development in the lower east shore and we developed a program for meals for work. To address the uh, the transportation barrier for those folks that need transportation to get to employment. So basically, that's what we're looking for. Uh, so we'd like uh you to consider either the train station or the snack bar. The uh, at Bird Park for us. Okay, Stephanie, how do you think most of your land?
Uh, I, I did one, yeah, one, one more thing, I think, and as far as the location goes, you know, we, we're not necessarily going to be uh. It's, it's not a full-time thing. I mean, we can be very flexible with it as far as opening hours and things like that, like. It could be even more like a pop-up kind of thing, uh. Where we just show up at Bird Park and for, you know, on a couple of weekends of, of a month and. Be there for anybody that comes by that needs a tire change or, you know, whatever needs to be done. Uh, and you know, if it's a project that is more uh involved, then we, yes, we might need to take it back to our workshop, but uh, you know. Just something like that. It, it might not necessarily have to be a full-time thing. Uh, but we would need uh space and if optimally, we'd like to have some water for washing bike parts. And uh, you know, if we're having children, uh, it has to be safe for them to be able to come to get there. Uh, and. Yeah, I can't think of anything else that.
So we're happy to take any questions if you're willing now.
Okay, okay. Uh, and Councilperson Lane? Do you have any questions?
Oh, I had uh several conversations. And uh, regarding. Requests being made, uh, for the record, uh, I support all of what they're doing. I think they've discussed a great. I, I shared with Bob, there's, there's many, there's still a lot of considerations to losing that train station. Uh, for anybody else, then hopefully fulfilling what. The discussion several years ago, the land itself involved, um, the, the train station. Has a significance in that it is, it represents out of slavery, the movement from the north to the south. Little one, that's the significance that it has to this community. That was particularly with, uh, probably twenty years ago. When the matter came before Baron Council at that point, and I don't remember exactly what the recommendation was. Of what the intent of the occupancy was for it at that time, I just don't remember. But the community came forth and said that, expressed several concerns that they had about it. I, I know what I said, what significance asked of me. I, I remember when I was a kid, very young. Of coming from Philadelphia to, to Snow Hill. Uh, to that train station, and that's how, at that point, we did not have cars, two ways to get back home. Trains or the bus, and the bus was not friendly, so uh, that's how, how it was done. And I shared with Bob and some others, they're talking about that this week, of how I can remember, I have some old pictures I do with them. My uncle's old raggedy Chevrolet truck inside it, what, what do you call it, the, the, would be there. So it was, it was a coming home place. Other people expressed it. So at that point, Bob, I mean, council, um. We need talked about the historical uh context of using uh that, of making it a historical site. And the, I, I do recall, I believe, there was some, I know there was some renovations that had been done. And the town invested that at that point historically in the roof, because it was leaking and coming down, and so that it would be in context. Having said that, I still hold that same uh concern, and I think it would be to the town's advantage. Particularly as we began to look at it, we called it then the Heritage Trail and we talked about it, and then trying to get it on, and give it on the register. All of that fell through. The only thing that sustained it, I think, at that point, was how it was refurbished at that time in preparation. I, I have two recommendations, Bob. I said I would, I'd promise Bob I would help if I could find some, but. Yes, I don't think that, I don't know, we have to ask about that. Uh. Help them, there you go.
Concession stand.
Yeah, concession stand. We were out there yesterday, uh, looking at it and there could be some challenges there. That's one, if that'll fly. The other is the new police station. I think that there is room, I know when I, when I toward that uh, the station with the uh, the police chief. There's a lot of space in there, a lot of space, and there's a back way that you can come back in the back way and it's unbelievable. I believe that maybe uh, that's a possibility right there. You talk about safety, you talk about relationship building. That could be a good hookup right there for you, so I'm still on the case. The park, I think that would be good. The police station, I think would probably be better.
All right, thank you.
All right, Councilperson Lumpens?
Uh, yeah, I'm one hundred percent behind your, your endeavor. I'd like to see this take off. My own question is, is are you looking to lease the space or you want the town to donate it?
No, we'd be willing, you know, we'd like to pay rent and, and, and.
Because it would be electricity, it would be.
Yes, absolutely, and we'd probably like internet service too, so we can.
Okay.
Set up. Uh, originally, our, in our, when we first started this, you know, we had a mission statement and our thoughts were. We would like to have a place where it would be almost like a, uh, like a. Recs, not a rec center, but a hangout for, because there really isn't a place for teens to, you know, a place, a safe place for kids to hang out and. Bring their bikes in and, you know, maybe have, you know, bicycle movies playing or something like that. I mean, that was our original. We wanted to, and have workshops, uh, and teach, uh, teach people to fix their bikes, you know? Uh, have mother-daughter evenings or, you know, father-daughter and, or son and daughter, you know, all, all kinds of workshops. Uh, maybe do some rides and stuff. So originally, we thought it would be great to have a place, like a hangout place, you know? Teen center or kids' center. That, that was our intention and we were on our way and things got changed. And we just haven't been able to find the space that's comparable to the place we were going into. We were supposedly going into the building across from. The Pocano River House, that's where our original place was, but that didn't work out, so we're still looking and we've been looking since we started for a place. It's just uh. It's, you know, we, we have some parameters we need to, to meet.
Do you have any uh grants that you're looking at at all to help you with this? I know you have donations.
Right, we, we have a lot of, we do have grants. We are writing grants, yes.
So, yes, so Wheels to Work program, uh, applied for a grant from underneath foundation of Longshore.
Okay.
And received a uh, eight thousand dollar uh funding for that, which we used to purchase helmets and reflective vests and. Lots that we give out with every bicycle.
Okay.
So we are looking at other grants, um.
The Tom Tank Foundation, we have gotten grants from them. I have applied for the Calvin Taylor Foundation as a grant.
Okay, good.
We are actively seeking grants.
We're, we're on the shoe straight now.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We're trying to increase the funding.
Okay. Councilperson Fletcher, do you have any questions?
I am for this, but I just have a different vision of the train station. I mean, um. If you're going to use this all the time, I do like what you just said, the second part that you said about. Having a place for not only the kids to, um, for you to fix bikes, but some, a hangout place for the kids. Then my mind went, start going around town and see where that could be a place. Where you could have something to store your bikes in, because then you say you're donating those space you have on um. Where you're storing your bikes, is that donated? You don't have to pay for that?
It's a board member who has a storage unit out in Whiten. Uh, there's a, you, it, well, it was a shop, at least, but now.
So are you looking to, when you want to use this space, are you looking to bring those bikes here too, to store the bikes up? I would love to know your, your further plan.
I think it's a little close, so we're, we are getting a lot of donations in. We contacted the police departments throughout the eastern shore. Um, to get bicycles donated to us. We've run out of, of storage space where we can't accept any more donations at this point. So we're going to use the Whiten Storage Facility um as sort of an intake as well. Um, but we also want to have a separate place where the bikes, after they've been refurbished, can be stored until we donate them, until we give them out to people.
This is a, it is a good idea and you all have been, I've seen a lot of people that have gotten bikes from you and they're really using them. They really are using them. I really think this is a great program.
We, it's amazing. There's a lot of people in town that do not drive for one reason or another and, and we have given out a lot of bikes to. I mean, there are a lot of people in Snow Hill that use their bikes to get to the um grocery store, to the dollar store and, and uh, you know. So we've, and, and we support our bikes. One of our things that we do besides give out all the safety gear ones, every recipient that we give a bike to gets. Helmet, lock, bike, uh, bike lights and safety vest. Uh, but we also support the bike. If they need tires after, after, you know, after a while or if they.
If they need tires after, after, you know, after a while, or if they, if the chain breaks, we support that. So, because there is nowhere in town...
So you follow them up?
Yes, right, yes.
At no cost.
At no cost.
At no cost.
Yes. And we also take in bicycles for local people here in town, because there, like I said, there is no, uh, bike shop. Uh, that can pay, uh, we ask them to make a donation. Chris fixes a lot of people that just ride their bike for enjoyment, recreation. And if they can pay, then they donate some money. Uh, we do give them free stuff too, but if they can donate, we, they do. And so that's another way we get money.
Okay, okay, yes.
Yeah, Randy, let me ask you a question. So we can narrow down. Is there, is, is, let's talk about that thing in the park.
Concession stand.
Any possibilities in, in?
It's totally up to, uh, I mean, it's totally up to y'all. I mean, yeah, if you use, absolutely.
I think that would, I don't know, I, I, I think that would be a great, yeah, a great location. But I, I, I would still, I, I think to have a conversation with the chief, because your second part, your second part...
And he ain't talking about that?
That would be ideal to have something like that at the police station. You got everything that you need, the security, relationship building. Uh, I, I think that's what I'm listening in, in terms of all this stuff, you know? Uh, but everything else, I mean, it was just building, and then I'm sure I don't have to, I believe he will be open to that. Okay, thank you.
Melissa, do you have something?
Sure. Your idea? So thank you, guys, for being here. Um, I've seen Backstreet Bikes, um, since its inception, um, and just, you know, have seen it develop over the years. Um, Backstreet Bikes was integral in the, um, formation of our, um, bikeways feasibility study. So, um, Kathy Freeman at that time, um, she actually went around and was tool design and, and really helped identify, um, the bike loop. So, um, you know, Backstreet Bike has just been, you know, active and, and involved in, in the town for the past five years. Um, the train station is specifically kind of lends itself, um, to, to this kind of use because it is going to be right on the, um, the bike loop. Um, and it really, it specifically comes out, obviously, where, um, the, the train tracks come. So, um, if you're familiar with, um, the, the Worship County Master Bike Plan, um, there is a push to connect Burland to Snow Hill. Um, so, and that would come through right, um, right kind of in that area. So, um, there's a lot of really good synergy in the, in the train station, um, specifically for this use. Um, and not to mention, I mean, it's been part of our, our nature and heritage tourism assessment. It's kind of been a goal of economic development, if for my time, um, to bring a bike outfit or two to Snow Hill. So we're checking a lot of boxes here, um, kind of this community space. I love the idea of, um, you know, a place for, for kids to kind of hang out, but also to provide, you know, this, this biking support, um, and to really support that industry. So, um, you know, particularly here in Snow Hill, as we're trying to, to kind of take the bikeways feasibility study and begin implementation. So this would be a really, a really nice, um, kind of springboard, and it's, and it's, it's organic, um, because the, the, um, you know, Backstreet Bikes, they were, they've been involved since day one with our, our, our bike plan.
I forgot what that was. A pool?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So thank you guys very much for coming today.
Thank you for listening to us.
Yes, thank you so much.
We've been here for a while, so...
Yes.
As long as we're needed, for sure.
Yeah, we're, we're so excited for what you're doing. And the work, Ellen, also, not only the kids, but the work, going to do with the bike, yes.
And also, you know, biking is becoming a, a big tourism role. I mean, that's, uh, one of the things we talk a lot about in the coalition meetings. Uh, you have the Century, uh, ride that comes through town. Uh, if the, you know, the, what Bob mentioned, uh, and Larissa mentioned about connecting Burland to, and Snow Hill, Oakmoog, uh, Virginia's doing that on their rails to trail. I mean, uh, we'd like to be part of that. There, there will be a need at some point for bike maintenance, um, you know, for tourists also.
Right.
Uh, which could be, become an income for us and for the town, uh, you know, as far, because we, that was another thing. We wanted to have a small retail space, kind of help bring in money for Backstreet Bike, for the work we do for the community, if we have a small retail shop for people to buy tubes and tires that are bicycling through town, um, out at Chad or where, you know, doing the century or whatever. So that was another thing.
Okay, well, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
I have some, some thurs too.
Yeah, brush yours.
Yeah, just to have a sign, you know?
Want a final name? Okay, go ahead.
When this come back, it'll come back to the committee, uh, to the council for final, you know, recommendations?
They'll come back to us, yeah. That little section.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda, Town of Snow Hill Docking Policy decisions. And we have members of our Port of Snow Hill Committee?
The Advisory.
The Advisory Committee. So, um, and who is speaking? Mr. Philms, are you at my request?
Yes.
Are you speaking?
I'd be glad to.
Okay, we have a report in our packet. Thank you.
I think, I think the report is pretty well self-explaining for it, fair rules. But we're here to ask any questions that you might have. I assume everybody's had fifteen minutes.
Do you want to just very quickly give us a little summary of maybe some of your adventures and time that you've had? We, we'd like to hear that also.
I think everyone noticed the committee members.
We have, maybe not.
Steve.
Karen may not, so...
Randy Cooks.
You don't?
Claudia Smith.
Matthews.
Kurt Smith. Kevin Brown, not here.
Kevin Brown's not here.
And earlier, I'll definitely add, non, just, Larissa.
Larissa, also part of this.
Yeah, we met multiple times, um, we, uh, we spent a lot of time visiting other small towns, marinas, and docking facilities, just to find out how they're making out. What are, what are their rates? What are their issues? And, uh, it was, it was eye-opening. And so the report summarized some of that for you, uh, particularly rates, and you focused on, on rates. Uh, we walked around, uh, Steve Matthews and Randy and myself and Kevin Brown. We walked through our existing facilities, uh, to take a look at the, the state of maintenance that we have. And, and we have three areas. We've got Gateway Park on the north side of the bridge, we've got Sturgis Park, we've got Bird Park. So, uh, Bird Park is actually in pretty good shape. The, what have you, there are some signs that the vault heading in Sturgis Park is going to need some attention. And so it would behoove us to, town to start, start looking at, assessing that by someone who's a former expert than myself, uh, and, and perhaps getting in, in line for DNR funding for that. Because whether there's a vote out there or not, it's, it's something the town has to, has to maintain. The, the docking facilities, at least from, from our, uh, uneducated perspective, the, uh, the facilities at Gateway Park, pretty good shape. So, um, what can I take on?
Council members. Take a look at your report, and any, Councilor Summumens, you have anything you want to ask? Um... You got it, you got it?
I do, I actually, I looked through it already. I, uh, I just, I noticed that we were going with the same rates that, that Summers Cove and, and Chrisfield, which would seem prudent, you know? I can't see it. What other some dicky was, one of the members, though, the definitions of long-term docking, where that was best left at? Especially absentee docking, when people just leave the boats for a small school. I have no problem with that, at a, at a bird park by Sturgis. You know, if they're not here, they're still docked there, it's a job, the river, whatever.
Well, that's kind of be recommended, what we do, yeah. So, I, you know, Bird Park was, in, in, some places don't have a seasonal and all-season rate, like, down at, uh, Public Landings, got one rate all year long.
Yeah.
Twelve hundreds were small, fifteen hundreds for lower. Um, most of the marinas that we looked at, uh, so it's had seasonal rates and all-season.
Yeah.
And then they had transient, and, uh, then they had long-term.
Yeah.
Uh, and then day use as well. So what we, what we looked at, and we were really trying to consider, what Larissa explained, just like town where, if Sturgis Park would only be day use...
Yeah.
And transient use.
Okay.
Bird Park would be all of them, all of it.
Yeah.
And Gateway would be all, so you'd have seasonal use, all seasonal, as well as day use.
Yeah.
So, so at Sturgis Park, the transient, they're, they're there, they're with the boat.
There was, yeah.
So that's not an issue.
Yeah.
And we heard that pretty, pretty classic.
Yeah, and how many, uh, what, you, you're, you're in touch with the people who actually own the boats at Sturgis and, and, and Bird?
I...
I don't, majority of them long-term or absentee?
There's only three boats, you know, and there's one boat at, at...
I know there's two at Sturgis now.
Yes, do, now, where's the third one? I don't, one is...
That third one doesn't stay there like the other two does. And there's one there that is there all time, that I don't see move.
Right, one is of the three, but the one, the third boat's gone now, I don't, yeah, gone.
Uh, they were up in April. There was one, I saw, I saw, one of them, yeah.
Had ring, had ring cover, said. Oh, there's one boat who, uh, is truly transient. He comes up from, goes down to South Carolina or Florida in the wintertime, comes back. The other one is just long-term.
Okay.
And then the third boat, I have no idea.
Okay.
And then the Pontoon boat at Gateway Park, that's there all the time.
Okay.
So that is, I think the one, the Pontoon boat is owned by...
So former business.
Former business. And then they let the, I think they leave it there so that the community, those community, the community's on the force. They, they've said that they would move it, leave that.
We have to, you keep everybody, we'll speak, so this is not that number.
No, no, it's a...
That was just used for a little while, correct?
I, I think they did one or two runs. The, the owner of that boat was out of Chrisfield.
Okay, oh, I heard that.
Um, whatever the business arrangement was, just did not continue.
Didn't continue. Okay.
Um, well, I, um, I don't see anything about water charges on here.
Now, if we find out, as for the dozen or so places that we visited, they don't charge for water, they charge for electricity. They don't charge for water.
Well, the state that we're in, I think we need charge for water.
Yeah, but that, that was all under, under your range, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I see electricity's here, but I think we should, that should be something to consider.
That's, that's the, the house.
And the, and the pump. Talk, talk to me about the pump, um...
Well, yeah, the pump house station.
Pump house.
Is, is I understand it, Randy, it's not working, correct?
No, it has been working for a few years, and I told McDonald from, uh, DNR, and she said there was grant money in the place that could take him and get one. And the town will probably have to get it first, and they would grant, like, you know, reimburse them all their money. And I don't have the exact price in front of me now, but it was pretty very expensive.
With the grant, we have to put the money out, and then they would reimburse us? All of it?
Yeah, I can reach back after, I'll tell you.
Okay.
I just, I just happened to run into Mary Beth Cruz, our senator. She sits on the DNR committee, and she's, and she said, what you just said, she said, you know him, there's money available.
She said what?
She said, let me know what you need. I said, well, it's not up to me.
Okay.
The town, so...
Excuse me, you need to speak to...
Maybe they can't hear you.
They can't hear you. Somebody, somebody says you need to speak up there.
Okay, Denise.
All right, any other questions from council?
I'm going to question, I have a comment. Uh, I didn't know that much about building up. Roll on a boat, on all seas on a boat. I didn't know there was water in the world, for, spend seventeen days on the water. So I asked this gentleman to, if he would show me what all of this proposal, well, and what was going on with it. He took his good time, I thank you for it. I was going to thank the committee, an excellent report. You all did an excellent job. I, 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 I believe, you're recommending solid, my colleagues have, you know, bounced the money piece off. I'm more excited about the aesthetics of this, and what is going to be the long-term for Snow Hill as we grow, and how we can, um, um, grow our community as a result of re-institutionalizing the port of, the Royal Port of, uh, Snow Hill. And I'm excited about that.
As a citizen, uh, I think it's an asset, I mean, the river's an asset, and I, I just think it's an asset that we ought not to ignore. You know, so, I don't know that I have the answers.
I, I, everybody knows the spot, but yesterday, we, I had the opportunity to stand at the spot again and look up, west of, over, over, that is one of the most gorgeous sights that you can see. Stand there and look down at that. That, I, I don't know, that's, that's, that's something, boy, you can take to the bank. Uh, so, but I just thank you guys for what you've done, it's a great job.
Well, you want, I just wanted to say, just, Steve, you, you have anything to add, or Randy?
I, I have another question for you, but anybody else have something to add?
I don't.
Okay.
Kurt, Claudia?
I, I do know that one of the boats down there, the gentleman, it carries his tank with him in pocket, and he, and he agrees with the fees that we proposed, and he's just waiting for somebody to come get the check.
Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
Yeah, and, and I will suggest that if you want to regulate the long-term phase at Sturgis Park,
Mm-hmm.
Make it cost-provative. Don't ban it, put, put a price on it so that those are cost, make it cheaper down at Bird Park.
Okay.
This was just, this is just a suggestion.
Yes, we understand.
And then, and then the conversation going, and there may be a better idea than this, but, but it's what we came up with.
Yeah, when you visited these towns, how did most of them run this? Did they have signs up and just people went to wherever they were supposed to to pay?
It very, yeah.
How did they, how did they, did they have a lot of, I mean, because we have only a certain amount of staff.
That's right. Well, I, I like the story about Vienna, you know, population four hundred and ten. Uh, their town hall was open three days a week, and they have a beautiful floating dock, or even, I think it's beautiful.
They got a grant for that, though?
They have ramps, it floats, you know?
Grant, grant?
Oh, it's all put in by grants.
Grants.
All grant money.
Okay.
Same thing down in O'Nancock, brand-new, lucky million-dollar facility, we went down and, and visited.
And, and, huh?
Brand-new, just open. So, but Vienna, Vienna has a sign, so if you come in, you have to contact the, uh, the city hall. I went there on a Tuesday, they were closed, but there was a lady in there working, so I knocked on the door. She unlocked it, and I went in, and I told her what I was doing. I was by myself. And, uh, she said, let me call the town manager. She's lived right across the street, so our manager came across the street, we sat down to talk, and she talked about the marina. And she said, you know, that marina's really important to us. Uh, she said, we get about eight to ten thousand dollars a year, and we need that, it's a little town. And so, uh, most of theirs are, are seasonal. They're, they're there for the whole season, so they, and they have a waiting list, so...
Is there season, April to October?
Yeah.
Okay.
It is. And I don't, uh, believe they have many boats.
How many?
Well, it is, it's, forty or so slips they've got there.
Okay.
So, and, and their charges... And, and their charges are reasonable because they don't have electric in, in order. So. And so we do have that.
All right.
Um, you know, there was, uh, that runs the whole, the whole gamut down at, or Nantucket, they do have a dock master.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. Blades up in, that's a little town right next to Seaver.
Mm-hmm.
They have a dock master. The other ones do not.
Saxis does, where Saxis?
Sax, I didn't go to Sax, yeah, I didn't go to Sax.
Okay. Uh, so the, the new company, they just, they are willing to be the after hours contact for people who come past four o'clock?
That was some time ago when Steve was mayor, go ahead, Steve, tell me about the law.
Well, but actually, unless you all have fired him, Gary Laws is the dock master. I ordained him. He's got a certificate on his wall.
He has a certificate?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I think.
And he's got east of the bathroom. Unless you all would change the locks.
Yeah. Well. As, as few of the boats as I anticipate really using it, I mean, you have a sign that says. Call this number at town hall, go up, write your check. Democratic card, whatever, whatever it is, if it's after duty hours, go to the canoe shop. Yet in fact, they're willing to still do that.
Yeah.
Or you could, you could put it online.
I have a quick question.
Yeah, sure.
Yes. And only because. That's what I like to do. Um, the, on Gateway Park, you said there could be three to four boats depending on size. Uh, the, how much bumper are you giving for the kayak launch there?
How much do you want? You know, how much?
Um, the only reason being is that's one of the major places to go and launch a kayak. Wasn't two kayak launches on the Long River at that point.
Oh.
That's the easiest of the two to get to and to unload and.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
It's also the one area that's the hardest to get to because you've got to raise the bridge.
Yeah. You got up there. And so that's the big thing there is that that's also the best part of fishing, so on that side of the bridge, so. I'm, I'm speaking from a little point of self-preservation.
You know, Aaron, I don't, yeah. Hey, my fault was, nobody. Yeah, they're fishing. That might want to leave their boat there for a week for multiple days, what have you.
I'm thinking it'd be, just the, my suggestion would be to give probably a five or ten foot buffer. Around the kayak launch, both for us and for the canoe company to have plenty of room to get people in and out of their sleep. Because if you get too close to that, you're trying to navigate in from the river.
Mm-hmm.
That, right at that point, because it mirrors down on the bridge, it's very fast. So you have to come in at a specific angle, if not, you overshoot it and almost go straight under the bridge. Uh, because it picks up speed right there from a kayak or canoe point of view. Um, so I would just recommend that it be, whatever the considerations are, that there is a somewhat of a space, at least ten feet, I would say. To give you safe conditions coming in, so you're not coming in too fast for someone who may not feel good at kayaking or canoeing, running into somebody else's boat. Doing something inappropriate that will possibly tip you over, because it's also very deep there.
Um, Marissa, you were a member of the committee.
I am.
Do you have some things to offer?
So thank you to the committee for, uh, for inviting me, I, I got to attend one of the meetings. Um, and we, um, I felt that we were able to come to a pretty nice compromise, if you recall. Um, the initial suggestion was to just not allow long term docking at all. Um. My understanding of, um, you know, our meeting is a little bit different than what showed up in the final report. Um, so I just wanted to, to bring a few things up. Um, the transient definition, um, seems, uh, it doesn't really, um. Capture the spirit of trying to, to increase accessibility at Sturgis Park. Um, I believe in the report. It allows for, um, any boat that is live aboard and visits Snow Hill for a night or multiple night. Uh, or any length of time, um, later on. In the report, it says for a day, week, month, or longer within the seasonal period. So, um, the seasonal period being from April first to October thirty first. That's when the majority of our events take place. Um, so, you know, one of the, the key things that we were trying to accomplish here is to, um, ensure that, that. Our events as they grow in number and, um, and intensity too, and, and, and they're becoming, you know, much larger. Um, that we have, uh, the, the space that is needed, uh, we have things like boat docking, um, on the schedule. There, um, this year we have the canoe joust, we have, um, uh, the fireworks, we have the river rock race, we have a number. Of, um, of events and we're, we're just, we're adding more. Um, and we're really trying to focus on the Pocomo River, um, because we do realize what an asset it is, so. Um, my, my biggest contention would be with the definition of transient. Um, I know that when we have met in our meeting, there were, there was a lot of agreement. Um, that, you know, Bird Park offered a nice opportunity to allow overnight docking, um, or even long term docking. While, you know, reserving Sturgis Park for events and daily, um, you know, docking. Um, so that way we're still allowing that, uh, you know, people to travel, um. You know, to, for the downtown or, you know, what have you, so.
Hmm.
Um, that, that would be my, my one thing. Um, I am not necessarily, personally, and I, and I think other staff would probably agree as well, long term unintended docking. Regardless of where, um, one of the things that, that really spurred this conversation was the safety concern and liability concern. Um, you know, there were a number of incidents over last summer of kids jumping on some unextended boats. And then into the middle of the river, um, you know, and there's a number of, of stories, um, you know, like that, so. Um, that's just one thing that, that, you know, I, I personally would not be comfortable with. Um, I was not part of a lot of the, the fee determination, there was so much work put into that, and I fully appreciate that. Um, I would, however, like, um, you know, our finance teams are kind of assess costs. Um, and compare those, those fees to make sure that they are in alignment. Uh. Just trying to go through my, my notes here, I'm sorry, give me just one second. Yeah, and I would just say, um, as far as Gateway Park goes, um. You know, I think that we should probably have a conversation with Pocomo River Canoe Company. Um, not just whether or not they would be willing to be the point of contact, um, but, you know, kind of to, um, to Aaron's point, um, you know. Um. How is it going to impact their business, um, you know, different type of, of docking there, so. Um, just some things to think about, I think, um, you know, there was a, a conversation earlier about, you know, maybe a, a more developed. Um, you know, this report here that the, that the committee formed is an excellent starting point. Um, there was a lot of thought and time and that went into this process, um, and I really appreciate the engagement. Um, so, you know, I, I think it's a, it's a great place to start, and now there's just some. Additional details that, that need to be flushed out, um, and I would very much appreciate a reconsideration. Um, of the transient definition, just, you know, as we are, um. You know, trying to optimize the use of Sturgis Park, they make it accessible, um, you know, for, for all people. We did have five, we have five long term dock boats last summer. Um, and, you know, right now, we don't have as many because we are going through this process, there's been a little bit of press about that. Um, but, you know, when there were five last year, that was a lot. Um, and they definitely, you know, there was an issue there with our events. Um, for a number of reasons, and we have, you know, like I said, a number of that, so. Um, you know, I think that there, there is a, a middle ground. Um, and I, I'm, I'm very appreciative of the committee that, you know, we were able to have this discussion. Um, and hopefully we can, you know, just continue so that way, you know, we are meeting all the needs of the whole.
Okay, all right, thank you for that.
Now just say something, like when there's going to be an event taking place on the river. Couldn't you just notify those two boat owners and say, can you please move down to Bird Park?
You can answer it. Go ahead.
Um, so one of the big issues that we had last year is even though they are live aboard boats. Um, the, the owners are not there, um, very often, or, or, you know, sometimes they, they go away.
It weren't so before.
That's not true.
It's very true, because I'm lucky, does the events and I'm willing, he's trying to, to get in contact with people, so. Um, you know, they're, they're left kind of, you know, unintended, it's difficult to get other people. I think I had a number of code infractions last, last year, I believe it was. Um, and, you know, just trying to, to get in touch with people.
Okay. Yes.
Counsel, i- i- it seems that, I've heard of this before, this concern, and it is valid. And it seems to me that how you resolve that is that. When you make the permits or whatever you do to give. The person who signs the contract, they're going to dock their boat. State in it the ish, the times that the town. On a priority basis, if they do go to that or designated dates, that they ask. When they should be there, or when they're not, that's simple.
Yes.
So when the person comes here, I mean, simple, well, we just can't do it this day, or if we do, we've got to move up. That's not a problem to me, now maybe somebody else is in this, but.
Well, I was just thinking of signage part, if, if, when and all of this gets into. We need to have signage out there, not just let these people have permits. And it's on record or something, but signage would also help people to know what's going on too. Um. I think the chief and I were just talking a couple of weeks ago about signs for different things that we. Need to start being around town, safety issues, I've, I've seen a couple of things that I've made a list about.
Great.
Um, that I think signage would really help. To solve some things that we haven't had before.
Even at.
Yeah.
I don't think it's actually necessary.
Yeah, for different stuff.
Right.
So I think there's something that needs to come up, this.
One of.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. One of the, going that, one of the things should be, how many slips you actually want there, actually. Markings up for individual slips. And that number of slips, so you know exactly whose boats and what slip over time. Uh, so you have a little bit more organizational, controlling the numbers of slips that you're allowing. And that way, if you want to speak to a, um, person, these days, you may want to restrict Sturgis Park to. Only weekly at the maximum, and then just protect those weeks that have the fence in them. Um, and then you can allow Gateway and for Bird Park to be here longer term. Well, or, as you said before, discourage people is to severely increase the price on Sturgis Park.
Yes. That's the number.
Reducing the price on the other two.
But you can't take comments till the end, you can sign up as a back if you want.
There's a couple of points that we can make an agreement to work out the, the.
Right, another thing that I think that we probably should all look at is what does the permit look like? When they're paying, are they just coming to pay? How do you have the information?
Yeah.
What is, what is the actual protocol?
Mm-hmm.
When we're, when we have this, I think that should be for all fees and fines for some stuff when it's going to be long term.
Hmm.
That is something, um, you can have, if they turn it into Melissa, it can be kept in a certain place. And if it's needed, if somebody needs to be contacted when it's an event, but also the events. I think we should have signs up for that too, yes, we really do.
Okay.
So.
We're going to be.
Any hardships.
Discussing this, keep all your good ideas and everything, we're going to be discussing this further in the other workshops, so we're not making any decisions tonight, but we're. Going to take all of this information, all of the opinions and ideas from everyone, so I just.
I hear that.
Yes.
This is, this is just a story point.
Absolutely, absolutely, and we appreciate all your hard work and visiting, I hope you had a good time. Also, when you visited all these towns and got all the information from them, but we really do appreciate all you've done.
We've had calls from any of the council, both our council people. Who have questions that weren't answered at this meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Contact this.
We can send them, we can, yeah, that'd be great, that'd be great, thank you.
And thank you all for volunteering your time, and, you know, so this is.
When everybody gets, gets involved, yeah, yeah, makes, makes the town go. Okay, next item, re-annexation of portions of Colburn Lane. Rick, you want to talk to us about this?
Reluctantly, I'd like to tip toe into this topic. We've been through, as you know, for the last number of weeks of zoning map correction process. Uh, go back to the common theme between this issue and that one. Is that when Summerfield was annexed a number of years ago. Um, it didn't work out and it was subsequently de-annexed.
Thanks.
The zoning map that was produced as a result of the annexation. Showed correctly that the three schools on Colburn Lane and the city-owned, town-owned property where we have a well. Were part of that annexation and consequently showed up on the zoning map. When the property was de-annexed, the zoning map was not corrected. And so we've been operating under a faulty zoning map for some time, and the council has already taken steps to change, to make that correction, to have the zoning map actually conform. To the existing town lines of the town. What happened was that sometime during that period. Before I came around, the town applied for and was approved for a grant. For a power, a backup power generator for the well there on the little piece of town property on Colburn Lane. We qualified for that grant by virtue of it being in the town and being a place, well, as a part of the priority funding areas. That the state recognizes as making us grant eligible. When the property was de-annexed, the zoning map should have reflected that that property and the school properties were not in the town limits anymore. Which would have disqualified us for that grant. So, as of today. We are not, the, the three school properties there, the special school, the elementary school, and the middle school, and the town well property are not in the town limits. The zoning map is about to be changed to reflect that. In order to qualify us for the grant. I'm suggesting you might want to consider annexing just those three school properties and the town well property. There's a lot of advantages to the process in that we're only talking to the county commissioners as. Other property owners, it's not like we would be suggesting annexing any property that's privately owned where somebody might have a concern about. Coming in and paying town taxes and so forth. Um, it would bring the schools back into the town limits, which would give our police department ready authority to respond to emergencies there and to provide police services to the schools. It would also, as I say, have the well property into town limits and then therefore protect our grant. To pay for that backup power generator. So there is a process involved of, to annex the property, I have made initial contact with Weston Young at the county commissioner's office. Weston doesn't believe there would be any kind of issue with the commissioner, but we, he wants to see exactly the, the, where the line runs, what, what the annexation would look like. And as I say, you can basically look at the zoning maps that we're correcting and the part that we've been, that we took out from the zoning map. Would be restored to the town line through the annexation. And then irony of ironies after it's annexed again, we'll have to go back and change the zoning map to reflect what we just took away. So, that's why.
That's one question I was asking when it was very first started.
Right.
Is there a map from the very beginning? And what goes, because if you have, you had to have a map somewhere. It should be.
Yeah. The, the, the existing town line as it exists today does not include the three schools or the town well station. But the zoning map did, or does.
And they have it since 2019. We have to correct the zoning map on second reading. It's gotta be corrected because it's been being used for various things, like a grant you all applied for, and it was wrong. And that will affect you all. So we need to, whatever we do, get that zoning map right. If it changes in a year or two, it changes in a year or two, but we need to have a correct map for you all to be operating on for all sorts of different things. Whether you want to annex certain properties, as Rick described, to, to deal with the Colburn well issue is a part. And if you do that, things get updated after you, whenever you annex or de-annex, other maps will have to get updated. You'll have a land use map, maps in your comp plan, other things are all gonna critical area, area mass. So all of your type of land use maps will need to be updated to reflect any properties.
No, there's no fiscal impact because the, the properties aren't paying town taxes now, so they wouldn't be paying town taxes if we annex them. So it really, what it, what it does, it, it provides benefit to the county and the school system by virtue of the additional police protection that they offer by, by virtue of being in the town. But it also protects our ability to afford grants and, and keep the grant that was awarded to us for the well, get the backup power generator. That's the only well in town, so there is no backup power. And so it's kind of critical that we get that body as soon as we can. So tonight I bring it up to see if we get your consensus to start the process to annex those, uh, four properties, three school properties in the town lot.
So can you explain these maps that are in front of us?
Yeah, it looks like, it looks like the, the third one is the existing town line. The second one is the correct zoning map in the existing town line.
So the, this first, I can, I can see that, but I cannot see where the.
The, the second zoning map.
Can't tell the.
The second zoning map is the erroneous zoning map, which shows that the little tiny square is the town well site. And then on both sides of the road are the county school sites. They are not in the town limits, but they're showing up on this zoning map, which is what you're trying to correct now through your zoning map of them. First zoning, the first map is the actual town limits as they are now. The second map is the actual zoning map that it should be.
So this is, this is the correct one, as it should.
Yes, sir. And it should, and, and if you'll pass the, the current amendment or ordinance that's on the table for second reader on the 10th, then that will be in effect.
The middle hills, where there's a map that is connected to Snow Hill, so.
Well, this is the only area in conflict. After the de-annexation of Summerfield, this, this was the area that erroneously showed up on the zoning map and needs to be corrected immediately. And what we're suggesting is that you consider re-annexing those three school properties at the town well site. And if that goes through, then you would go back and adopt a zoning map to cover that, which we're trying to get rid of today.
Any, any map in town would have to be updated to reflect new boundaries. Yeah.
So is it smart to do them all at one time?
You need to change your zoning map now because for the last five years, the town has been incorrectly using a zoning map that reflects properties that have not been in the town for five years. So forget anything else you've heard, we have to do that for second reading. Now, what I'm saying to you.
We can get started.
Yeah. Is that if you would like to bring these three properties and the wells back into town limits, we have to follow an annexation process. They have not been in it since 2019. If you would like them to be back in it for the reasons Rick stated, we'd have to start an annexation process. Once you did all that, other town maps have to reflect the new boundaries.
But the only difference is gonna be these properties we're talking about now.
So very specific.
Doesn't change any other boundary anywhere else in town.
This is changed.
Larissa might be better than wanting to point out exactly where it is. Cause I don't know the streets.
No, it's not, just, okay.
Can you tell, can you tell us what other maps that we're specifically talking about?
So if you annex properties into town, one, you're just, your town boundary map would be changed. Your zoning map would be changed. Your critical area map would change. All those maps have your town boundary on it. I'm not saying the content of the maps will change, but your boundary on all your fish, official maps are gonna change.
But the only difference you'll see is this area here, when we pick up these properties here. Everything else stays the same. Nothing else is being touched, either in the zoning map change or if we, if we annex it. This is the only thing that will change. But as Maureen says, a new map showing the entirety of the corrected areas will need to be produced.
They are required by state law to have certain official maps. Those official maps have to show the boundaries, have to show, you know, whatever their denomination for, but all of them have to have the correct boundaries. That's the main reason why we have to go through the process of getting back to the correct zoning map now. And then would have, if the annex goes through, we did the annex, then we would have to change those at that time. Then operation found it.
And so the only changes involve these four jobs.
And Miss Oe to add to that, you know, if you guys annex any properties, the county GIS mapping system, like their robust computer system has to be updated. It has to go to the state, the state's robust computer system has to be updated to show our correct boundaries. So.
Just as an example, we talked about the critical area today, that map that the state has. That map that the state has does not match what we currently have as our, you don't, we cannot find an official map that shows those things written out. So we have to make sure that we get all these official maps corrected so that we're operating in the way that we're supposed to, so that we match with the state, with the county, with everybody.
Right. Counsel, how do you feel about this? Do you want to, um, include the schools in the revision? And get started on that, even though we're accepting another map for second reading?
And I will add that we can't just annex the town lot. It has to be contiguous, any annexation has to be contiguous to the existing town line. And in order for us to pick up the town lot, we have to go through the school properties to get some.
Gotcha, okay. Say that again.
We can't, in other words, if we're going to annex a property, it has to join the existing town line. So we couldn't skip over the school property and just annex that one little square that belongs to the well. We have to pick up the school property that's in between the well and the existing town line. That's why we put it all back into one effort.
Like, we couldn't just like, we want to annex this property out here. Can't do it. It's gotta be, like, can't give us space.
But there's no downside that, that I can see to going forward with the annexation. And the positive side is we protect this important grant that we need in order to put power supply back to the town well.
What do you see as downside?
I don't see a downside. I say we annex it.
So this is going. I can't see it. I, I'm trying to see it as like the property.
You don't need a map, you know what it looks like.
Yeah, so, but that's what I'm saying. So like, the back of the elementary, that part of the property that I'm, I'm thinking because it's saying that, no, I need to see the street again. I can't tell the street. But, um, it looks like it's just going straight from there, straight out to Market Street, behind the well to, from that people.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And it picks up the well on the way.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So you're good with it?
Yeah.
With the map? Including the schools?
I'm struggling.
What information do you need?
I'm not sure, mayor. It's not the info, I don't think there's so much information on here. Seems like there was coming up with me, keep functioning with a gun at our head. Keep functioning in crisis and, and, and just over and over again, that's it. I, I'm just, you know, I, I, I have to go along with what is being said on this one. I, I really do. But the, the time has got to come at some point. I, I just can't keep on functioning like that. I'm sorry. That's, that's just me. I don't know what, a- a- anybody, crisis management for me has always been a no-no. And that's how I seen yours functioning, uh, at, at times. Okay? So I just, I've, I've got a problem with it. You know, there is, you know, you call it once, once or, you know, what it isn't. But having said that, I'm gonna move motion, if you need a motion, ma'am.
I don't need, I just need consensus.
Okay, well, you got mine.
You got, I got yours.
Well, my thought is, is if we're gonna do this, we, I mean, it's, it's gonna be, and I'm thinking forward as keep bringing something back to the table as far as Maureen and money. We need to try to get all the maps we can, if we're, if this is what we're doing, and get it straight at one time. And be on a level that we're gonna be, everything is gonna be okay. Not just zoning, not just because the comprehensive plan is coming. And if all of these maps are within there that we're gonna be working on, changing plans, we need to have all this straight first and not just keep doing it as we're gonna be working on each piece for a comprehensive plan.
May I just say something, please? Because I, I, I've come in here in the last four years and I have to endorse what Councilman Lee is saying, but I'm telling, what I am saying is that's the hand we've been dealt. We're finding ourselves in a position.
Yeah.
Having to make all these corrections and fix things. Six years ago, none of us were involved in any of that. But six years ago, somebody made a mistake on the town map and it's got the potential of costing us dearly. Fortunately, there wasn't 10 or 20 homes that were erroneously included on the wrong map. And here we've been paying, collecting property taxes from, from land that wasn't in the town limits. Fortunately, this is about the easiest thing to fix that I've ever seen because it's three county properties and the town well property. And with, with one process, we can fix this property. But I understand what you're saying, but that's been part of our frustration is how did we get in this fix? But we're trying to, it's our obligation that once we say it, we gotta fix it, right?
You know that I hear you, but I am so sick and tired of coming back over and over and over again. I'm just gonna have to throw my hands up and say, you think what you want to think about me, but I'm.
But this is a good thing.
I'm gonna go with you.
This was just like tagging on with Mrs. Fletcher was saying is this annexation is gonna require a lot of legal work. So you guys gotta be on board. So if you change later and you don't want to do it, you're gonna spend a lot of money of, of you guys having each ass. So I think Mrs. Fletcher's point's well taken. You guys, everybody's on board then now, we get on board because she's right.
And we get it all done, yes.
Plan does have all these type of maps attached to it normally. I've been, not until we get in depth with your company, but all the companies I've ever seen, you have your land use map, your future land use map, you have all these maps. They're all based on the corporate boundaries. So yes, all of them will have to be in the comp plan process to make sure that they reflect new boundary. And as Larissa, Rick, me, Erin, Candace have all now lived through finding that you guys were not using the crap map for five years, are probably gonna be pretty, um, careful to look at. You guys are not going to have this map problem again. Larissa, did you hear something else? Hold on just a minute, she's been wanting.
So I just wanted to, to clarify kind of to your point, Councilwoman Blake Fletcher. All of our other maps are correct. We just had one map, which was the zoning map that had been signed that was incorrect. So the county actually had the correct map on file. Um, but what we had and what we were operating from was incorrect. So there's, there, it's not like we have 20 other maps that we're gonna have to bring and, and update and then go through the annexation process and then re-update all those 20 maps. We just have to fix this one zoning map, which is up for second reader on the 10th, and then go through the, the annexation and then that process. So, um, just if that gives you any reassurance, we don't, we don't have to go through 600 maps.
If we are up and ready, you guys decide if you want to go with the annexation, that would also roll into the comp also, so you have a few of the maps at the end of the comp thing anyhow, to make it match. So if, if we get on board now, and I think this is why Rick is bringing that down, so that we're all getting on board, we're all on our way, we're going, we can finally get this piece to rest and have it right and move on. So that, you know, it's kind of been our philosophy and it's kind of our responsibility to kind of catch up on some things over the past.
Now, personally.
Yeah, I just hope that, that the work that the county is doing right now, this very thing, and I just hope that we're plugged into that.
They have our correct map because we actually met with the county and Kelly Henry, their GIS person and their director. When Larissa discovered this problem, we met with them and as Larissa said, they had our mapping right. We do not have our mapping right.
You're gonna lose this so, you're all together.
You're, you're a part of the fix, look at that.
Yeah, that's, that's a good way to look at it. Part of the fix. Okay.
So what is the grant that's going along with this zoning?
No grant related to zoning, but you have a grant related to Cobra Mill well. Um, but what Rick is sharing is it's basically in jeopardy because it was shown yet as it being in the town and it's not, it's not town. In the town limits and the grant is based on that. Everybody okay now? On that consensus, well, it's.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, comments from the public?
Just backstreet bikes.
Backstreet bikes, they're gone. Okay, counsel, do you have any announcements? Counselperson Fletcher, you want to start? Any announcements?
No, no, high school graduation is on Thursday. The Bachelorette was tomorrow, no tickets, but commencement, you have that.
Commencement, you do.
Yes.
All right. Counselperson Watkins? Counselperson Lee?
This is the last week for the counties housing survey. Uh, I, I would hope that, and I thought that you'd get more exposure only through the town network. I, 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 they, I think I was told that link was put on, uh, was put there. I don't, is it there or not? I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, it was, so.
Yeah, it was, yeah, that's the limit.
The, the question is, this being the last week, how can the town on its website lift that up? Because it's important to us. I see some information and I want to, you know, push, 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 you know, stuff. But we, according to some, we, Snow Hill is leading in that process among the, 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 the townships. And I'm, I'm gonna say it, while we have differences along, I, I think it's gonna benefit to Snow Hill going to the table at different levels to show that type of participation. That's why I pushed it so hard. Uh, i- i- it's gonna be meaningful when you deal with numbers. I'm, I'm, I'm preaching to the choir. But I would hope, mayor, that for the many days that are left, the, 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 the thirteenth birthday, the last day, can't we lift that up and encourage people if they have not? The 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 thirty versus the last day, can't we lift that up and encourage people if they have not done? The survey for Snow Hill to 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 send it in, can we do that?
We have it posted, correct? The link, you said we did. Okay.
The link is not, but what I'm asking for is some, is is some encouragement, some some PR. That will encourage people within the two, one, eight, six, three, number, Snow Hill in particular to do that.
I guess we can talk to our communications guys, see what he can do with it.
Can I come back to you on that, Rick? Thank you.
Okay, um, I I hope everybody had a chance to read uh Rick's summary from last week and that we. Have a new engineering firm, uh GNV, George Miles and Bureau. And that our lease uh for the police department has been finalized, um, the station in on West Market Street. And uh they will be moving in. In a week or two, so it's exciting news for Snow Hill, we're very, very happy. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Dollar general. Market. Is a big.
Yeah, we had rugby hunting.
Yeah.
And it was fun, it was lots of fun. Um, it's much bigger than I thought it would be, it's uh. Have you been in?
Yeah, I've been in.
So it's got fruits and vegetables and meat, um, it's very exciting, very exciting. I did think you had your Mountain Dew.
I got the first Mountain Dew out of there.
I got some potties as well.
It's been busy, I'll say that.
That's good, and Raquel Waters is our. The manager is homegrown. Which is, is I'm very, so very happy for her. Um, and also the the guy who owns it, Howard, he's from Snow Hill also, right? Is it Howard?
Howard Cross is local.
He's local.
His offices are.
Oklahoma.
Oklahoma technically, but there's an address in Salisbury too, they're. That all of them.
Okay.
They developed most of the small town, so. Uh, sure.
Love it, love it. Do you have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
A second. All is fair to say aye.
Aye.
Aye.